We never said that.
No.
Down next year, you're wanting me to stay away.
There it goes. We're good. Are you gentlemen ready?
We proact.
Kenny, you ready? You ready?
Yes.
We'll start. Good morning. Welcome to the May 6th meeting of the Morgan County Council. If, is there a veteran here? Would you mind leading the pledge, please, sir? And then we'll have a following. That will be a prayer from Kenny Hale.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do your heads, please. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we just want to thank you for allowing us opportunity to wake up this morning, Lord. Thank you for the weather that we're having, and we just ask you please make it a little gentle to the next few days, Lord, with these severe storms that's headed this way. But we just thank you for the opportunity to come and spend a few moments with you, Lord. We thank you for your son. We thank you for the Holy Spirit. We ask that you please provide us with the wisdom and the knowledge to do what's pleasing, not only for the taxpayers, but especially you. We want to ask that you please put your coming arms around this planet, Lord, and just help us stay focused on doing what you want, day at a time, and stop all the long-range planning. Just focus on each day at a time, Lord. We ask it on your precious name, Jesus. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Hale. I would also seek guidance from anybody that can, the divine, help with your surgery that's coming up Wednesday. Also be with our administrative assistant Deb as she travels and enjoys the vacation with her son in Washington, DC, and look forward to her return.
I'm hoping that she, when she comes back, she'll figure out how smooth we run things versus Washington, DC.
Well.
A really good hope to have.
I know it. I know it.
It is. Thank you. First item on our agenda, of course, recognize we've got a quorum. The next item would be the minutes of April the 15th. Do we have any motion on that?
Brian Cayer makes a motion that we accept the minutes from April 15th as presented.
Second.
Made in second and all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion passes three to zero. We have a list of claims from the auditor's office.
Brian Cayer makes a motion, since there are no holds, to accept the claims of $3,697,336.17.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept the claims from the auditor's office, $3,697,336.17. All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Pardon me while I make sure my phone's off. I just heard a ding.
His mom.
Okay. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is a proclamation concerning mental health month. And then I'd like to call upon Keely Wright to address that, please. Thank you, Keely. Keely's from our Kendrick Foundation and, which is a great contributor to the health of Morgan County.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Like Commissioner Adams said, I'm Keely Wright. I'm the executive director of the Kendrick Foundation. I'm here today also wearing my Chair of the Morgan County Mental Health Task Force hat. So the Morgan County Mental Health Task Force, in partnership with the Kendrick Foundation, is requesting a proclamation for May as Mental Health Month in Morgan County. This year's Mental Health Month theme, Where to Start: Mental Health in a Changing World, reminds us that dealing with life's pressures can be overwhelming, and everyone deserves to feel supported and empowered to seek help when needed. In addition to this proclamation, we are requesting everyone be seen in green as part of Mental Health Month. Green is the official color for mental health awareness, as it represents renewal, hope, and vitality. The Morgan County Mental Health Task Force is an organization with over 100 individuals, some of which are here with us today, with 40-plus organizations represented that envisions a community where all individuals are supported and equipped to achieve mental health well-being. The task force aims to raise awareness, reduce stigma, and increase access to services. The task force, as part of the Better Communities Coalition, had its very first meeting in November of 2021, and so far, we've provided mental health first aid trainings to our members and communities, as well as various other evidence-informed trainings related to reducing stigma, foundations of prevention, advocacy versus lobbying, and so on. We developed our vision, mission, themes, and goals, and established work groups and prioritized activities to accomplish our mission and goals. We've promoted the Indiana Behavioral Health Commission report and advocated for its recommendations. We've heavily promoted 988, which, if some of you aren't aware, 988 is now live as the national three-digit dialing code for reaching the suicide and crisis lifeline, formerly the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline. Indiana is using 988 to invest in a broader crisis response system to help all Hoosiers. This will ultimately include more than just someone to contact at a 988 center, but also someone to respond in a safe place for help if needed. 988 offers a direct connection to compassionate, accessible care and support for anyone experiencing mental health-related distress, whether that's thoughts of suicide, mental health crisis, substance use crisis, or any other kind of emotional distress. People can also dial 988 if they're worried about a loved one who may need crisis support. In addition, we've promoted Mental Health Month, which is what we're here doing today, Suicide Prevention Month, Recovery Month, and so on. We developed and maintained a comprehensive mental health resource list for Morgan County, facilitated the First Better Communities Coalition Policemaker Meet and Greet, and so much more. And then in 2024, our plans include, again, promoting Mental Health Month. We have local proclamations so far from the town of Mooresville, the city of Martinsville, and hopefully we'll get this done this morning with Morgan County. Our members are also lighting up our offices green, wearing green. We're a sponsor of the Mojo Concert Series, so we have a lot of messaging around mental health during those, I think, 47-ish concerts. We're partnering with the YMC of Morgan County on this month's Morgan in Motion with the mental health theme, also participating and partnering with the Tobacco-Free Morgan County Coalition on their weekly walk at Pioneer Park. We're offering free mental health trainings with, in partnership with Prevention Insights. We can offer mental health first aid, as well as question, persuade, refer with our consultant through the task force. We can offer free mental health 101-type in services, one-hour in-person virtual trainings to businesses, employers, organizations, communities. Just let us know if you're interested. We've also, excuse me, partnered with a couple of researchers to get scopes of work for an environmental scan to assess policies and conditions in Morgan Counties that support mental health well-being. We hope to share the findings of that research, as well as the recommendations, and develop a policy agenda for the task force. Of course, we want to host another policymaker event sometime this year, and then Josh will talk about this later, but we hope to help with the distribution of our local opioid settlement funds. So I just want to share all of that with you about the great work that the task force is doing, and just ask that you consider our request for this month being Mental Health Month in Morgan County.
Thank you, Keely. Appreciate all the work that you do for this county and our community.
Likewise.
And this proclamation is kind of, let's whip it up during May and really make ourselves more conscious of the problem and how to deal with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have the proclamation in front of you. Do you have any questions about it? I would just read one small sentence here. It says, "Together, we can create a community where everyone feels empowered to prioritize their mental well-being and seek help when needed." I think that's the key to changes and addressing the problem that we are facing. So I entertain a motion for the proclamation.
Brian Cayer makes a motion that we make the proclamation that May is Mental Health Month for Morgan County.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We shall proclaim and sign this. And thank you, and also our own health department is very, with Trish working, is, we've seen so much improvements on what we're in direction, and I'd like to thank them for, I guess you'd say, the working together for this whole program. Thank you, Trish.
Chairman, we need to go back and acknowledge the treasurer's report.
I did that. I checked something I shouldn't.
Claims. We skipped the treasurer's report.
Report in front of you. Now, I just went right by that sucker. Do you have any questions on the treasurer's report? I'll take a motion to accept the treasurer's report for.
Brian Cayer acknowledges the treasurer's report as presented.
In favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes three to zero. Thank you, Commissioner Cayer. Next, we have a deed of dedication from Timberlake Woods. Mr. Justin Schneck from our Highway Department will address that. Good morning, Justin.
Good morning, everyone. So a few months ago, I came before you with a request from the subdivision to be taken into our, our infrastructure inventory. When they approached us, we had a couple of conditions. One was that they needed to submit this deed of dedication. Two was that they had to crack seal all the roadways within the subdivision to prolong the life of the roads as we were taking them in a certain time beyond after they were constructed. They have crack sealed the roads. I've inspected them and found them to be adequate for our purposes, so I am here before you with a deed of dedication to accept these roadways into our system. As part of this, we will turn this in to our, we will turn this mileage in as our certified mileage to NDOT, and we will get more road funding to help take, take care of these roads as a part of this. So just wanted to know if you guys have any questions about this. I think there is a representative from the subdivision here. If you have any questions for them as well.
You gentlemen have any questions? I have one small one. Do you guys do a test boring?
So we did pavement cores on all legs of the subdivision, and they were found to meet the old standards at the time.
I assumed you did, but when you were talking about the crack seal, which I think I totally support that, that whole process.
Yep.
But I wasn't sure about the holes.
Yep, we did that. We also inspected the storm sewer infrastructure beneath the road to make sure it was in good condition, so nothing would fail, and all the drainage out there looks adequate as well.
Drainage is a biggie, isn't it?
Yep.
All right, we have a deed of dedication that's being presented. Do you folks have any questions?
Kenny Hale makes motion, we accept a deed of dedication for Timberlake Woods, Section 1, the road.
Second.
All in favor of the motion on the table, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. And thank you.
Thank you. Got me one more.
Do you have a next dedication? Right.
So this is for Allison Estates, Section 1 and 2. This subdivision's on the north end of the county, up near Camby. A couple of months ago, I brought before you some maintenance and performance bonds, but we did not have a deed of dedication at the time. This subdivision was a little different. It was within the Mooresville buffer zone, so it was run through their plan commission. So we're using this deed of dedication as the instrument to bring this into our inventory. And again, we'll add this as our certified mileage to get more funding. We've made inspections. Everything looks good. We're ready to accept.
Do we have any questions on the Allison Estates sections, that dates? I'll entertain a motion for that.
Kenny Hale makes motion, we accept a deed of dedication for Allison Estates, Section 1 and 2.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have a rezone. And Ms. Parker, Laura Parker, from our Planning Division.
Yes, in your handouts, you have proposed for property located at 4355 State Road 44 in Green Township. This was a petition submitted by Ralph Ennis, and they are proposing to rezone just a little less than three acres from Ag to R1. And then they, it's, it's residential now, so this would just be in keeping with, use that's a current. Plan commission voted seven-zero in favor of this request, and forward that, their recommendation to you.
Thank you. Do you gentlemen have any, do I hear a motion or questions?
Kenny Hale makes a motion that we pass ordinance number 2024-09 for Ralph K. Ennis on the rezone going from Ag to R1.
Do we have a second? With that picture, it helped a lot. I'll second that.
But it's not color.
Yep, that's a good picture. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Motion passes three to zero, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sandy from Planning has a road name. I always love to see that on the agenda because I just don't know what to expect. What's up here, Sandy?
So Echo Lake Mobile Home Park, their roads are kind of a little wonky and everything. They are running actual addresses for some campers. And with how the road goes, I don't have enough ranges on the existing road name to actually address them, and so it actually is on its own little road. So I'm proposing to actually just give it a name of Echo Lake Camper Drive, because all it is is the campers, and so that will distinguish where they are located in the park. So it would just make it a little bit easier when a call comes in, that they know that that's the area.
Okay.
And so I'm proposing that road name for that.
Thank you, Sandy. I think most people don't put together the fact that the road names make it safer for vehicles and emergency things. Campers have those, as well as residences, so. And I'd like to see how they put a sign together that long.
It is going to be a little bit long, but all the other road names in there start with Echo Lake, so this just follows.
Part of the, consistent.
Yep.
Do we have any questions or a motion on the, on the proposed road name?
Kenny Hale makes motion, we approve the road name of Echo Lake Camper Drive.
Second.
I also submitted some additional road names to be added into our road lists. I would like to readdress the South State Road, Old State Road sections, south of town, and there's one, a couple north of town, because of the, people just getting them confused with different sections and stuff.
Do you want that to be in this motion, or do you want to make that an additional?
That's up to, if you want to make it as part of the motion, approving these road names, I went ahead and added some more road names to the list and everything to give a better option. So when I do go through and start renaming them, that there is more road names available. So.
Mr. Hale, do you want to add that to the motion, or do you want to make that separate?
Oh, I'd rather just let Sandy do that. She's going to be addressing anyway.
All right, there's a suggestion.
And Old 67s.
There's been a suggestion, we go ahead and take this first motion, and then we'll put us, put that on a second motion.
Okay.
Okay. So the first motion will be to the change out in Echo Park, or Echo Lake Camper. And all in favor of that motion, say aye.
We've already aye'd.
Well, I thought we just had a motion in a second. I apologize. I thought we.
We've not done the three ayes.
Right.
Right. We got the first and the second.
On.
On Echo.
Echo.
Now we just.
Now we haven't voted on that.
Correct.
So all in favor of the motions.
Your correction. We need to.
All right, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Now, the second motion would be to, on the road changes list.
Mm-hmm. Just add these.
To add those.
Uh-huh.
All right. Do we have any questions about that? So I'll take a motion on that. Entertain a motion for that.
We accept the proposed road name list as presented.
Second.
It's been a motion made and seconded on the proposed road change names. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes three to zero.
A little weak on the Greek gods, though.
I, I know, but Tom went through and we did somehow, so.
Yeah, we had some.
He kept Apollo.
It's.
Now on your old state road, 67 and 37.
No, it's just.
Why are we not doing all of them?
Let me, one bite at a time.
Thank you, Sandy. Yeah.
So is that something the commissioners are behind?
I am.
Okay.
What was that, Kenny?
I said, I am behind it.
Changing the Old State Road names. The adri, the.
Long and short, she wants you to be the bad guy, and that's making it a motion, so they'll call us instead of them, or, just call the commissioners, they did that. Kenny Hale make a motion, we approve Old State Road 67 be readdressed with other road names. Authority without it.
I'll say.
She has the authority without it? Wow.
Yes, I can, but I just wanted to make sure everyone knows.
She's wanting her blessing.
Yep.
When we get the call, we should say she has that authority.
I, yes, I do. It's just I want the blessing and to be upfront and just not start doing it.
So we know what we're doing. Helps you, helps us out. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We have a motion in a second. I don't think we voted on that one, do we?
Nope.
All right, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Aye. Motion passes three to zero. All right, aye. Motion passes three to zero. All right, now we are to the annual highway report. Hang on, I gotta get to that list here. Okay. Who's going to present that? Eddie. Eddie Fisher from our highway superintendent.
I come to you today with the annual report for the highway department. District one paving twenty twenty-three had a total in district one of nine hundred and thirty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars and sixty-five cents. District two paving was eight hundred and fifty-four thousand, five hundred and thirty-one cents. District three, little paving was seven hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred and sixty-eight, eighty-eight cents. That was total two million, five hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six, forty-three for the total of three districts. On chip and seal, district one, twenty twenty-three was a hundred and two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven, seventy-eight cents. District two was three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight, seventy-nine cents. District three was forty thousand, eighty-six and fifty-four cents. That's a total of three million, fifteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-nine, fifty-five cents. That was twenty-eight point thirty-eight miles on chip and seal for the total. That was ten point eight six in district one, twelve point six seven. District two and district three got four point eight five miles. Like I say, the total of those were twenty-eight miles. So have any questions about the annual?
Do you have any questions, gentlemen? I think, I I just not, not a question as much as anything, but when we're referring to districts, commissioner districts are based on population. The districts that you're using are those same maps, I suppose, or is it a different?
We have working districts are different than your voting.
Yeah, and is that more equitable on miles, or does that make any difference, I suppose?
By population, but as far as mileage, it's I don't have it in front of me.
Well, I know the mileage, population.
District two is a bigger, I believe.
Right, district two is quite large.
Population, I would say district three, Mooresville area would be probably, I have to look that up, but I don't have that.
Yeah, that's, and the districts one and three are continuing to expand, and district two is probably gonna have still more miles and so forth. So kind of a hard, it's difficult to.
Chip and seal in district three doesn't, you know, it's it's four point eight five miles versus ten and twelve miles in the others. People don't want chip and seal in district three. It's a town of Mooresville and, you know, outside.
Yep.
Not the town, but the outside surrounding. Main thoroughfare is there. People don't like that, so we try to continue.
It's somewhat difficult for the public to understand how it works because of the road miles and so forth, and the difference in travel and traffic counts and all that.
Saves a lot of, it preserves a lot of it for future, you know, we can't pave them all, so saves it so we can get on down the road with the rest of it and come back and pave them later. And like I say, the crack seal is gonna be a big benefit as well that we're doing on our own, so.
Well, I have one brief comment from my own
Yes.
district, or what I see happening in the department down there is, I guess I would use the word progressive. Thank you for the new actions you're taking towards preservation of our roads, and of course, that makes cost a little better down the pike. Bad, bad choice of words.
Tell them what you're really thinking. District one and three is so densely populated, we should get our districts asphalted every year.
No, don't wanna go there. No, we get a lot of use on our roads, and I think that, that of course, it's, I ran across at road school one time. It's not necessarily makes a road last longer, just because it's, it actually helps have roads used more than, you know, than than just sit. They need flex just like our muscles. Well, thank you, Eddie, and thank you for the department.
Thank you. I have a copy of this already.
Yeah, I went through it, and I appreciate.
Through that, there's more, there's a whole lot to that, but I'll just.
A lot of work goes in, besides out there labor, you gotta do a lot of pencils, so keeping track of stuff is very, very appreciated.
Thank you. Yeah, everything's in there, but like for the record, everything is at or under budget for the twenty-three and twenty-three, everything was, and it's still continuing that. You know that nothing's been up.
See, you're not loafing out there, that's for sure. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion on accepting the this report?
Kenny Hale makes motion, we approve the twenty twenty-three annual report for Morgan County Highway Department.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Motion passes three to zero. Next, we have enclave section five bonds.
Hello again. So this is regarding the enclave section five. It's a subdivision up northeast of Heartland Crossing Golf Course. This was just recently constructed. We've made inspections out there. The developer is submitting a performance bond for the HMA surface layer, and then maintenance bonds for the stone base and the HMA intermediate layers for the curb and for the storm sewers. So with that, we've made our inspections. We're looking for acceptance of these bonds. We are working on a deed of dedication to bring to you for the next meeting to accept these roadways into our system. So at this meeting, I was just looking to request acceptance of these bonds.
Do we have any questions from the board concerning these changes in or in performance bonds? I'll entertain a motion.
Kenny Hale makes motion, we approve the enclave section five, five separate bonds. Or is that section five? That is section five.
Section five, four bonds.
Four bonds.
Yes.
Forgive me.
We have a second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, real quick, I'd like to make a statement on the annual highway report. Prior in many years, the commissioners would divide up the paving and whatnot into their districts. And it became a point of contention for some people sitting up here because they want, the more black asphalt on their district, the theory is you get more votes. Having sit up there, I'm not gonna argue that there's not a direct correlation in that, but I will tell you, if you, if district one neglects the roads in district two and three, I get named in just as many lawsuits whether whether or not it's in my district. And therefore, we've, we've worked closely together, and you guys can correct me, I don't wanna put words in your mouth, on just trying to make sure what funds we have available go to the roads that need it the most. And I think we've worked together well to do that. So I may make the joke that my district, due to the population, is a lot smaller than poor Kenny Hale's. There'd be no way he could pave, ever pave all his because his population's so dispersed and covers such a large geographical area. Don and I have to share with district two. But trust me, behind the scenes, I remind him of that quite often. Thank you.
Thank you, and.
No.
I, I think that's a good thing about this board that we're working with. It's collaborations, what's good for the county, and we work together, and I couldn't be more pleased. Next, we have a grant application from our EMA office. Ms. Worth, Mrs. Worth, excuse me. Abby.
Yeah, whatever.
Hi, Abby.
Anything you wanna call me is fine, as long as it's miss or misses, you know? No, good morning, guys. I am coming to you this morning requesting permission to apply for the SHSP grant for twenty twenty-four. This is the State Homeland Security Program grant. This year's focus is on increasing security efforts for soft targets, which we do have quite a few of throughout the year here in Morgan County, a lot of large gathering open events with low security or security risk there. So EMA's plan is to apply for this a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant with a application focusing on a trailer that would be stocked with security equipment, such as portable barriers, medical equipment, handheld scanners, as well as some portable cameras that can be made available to event hosts within the county, so we can take that to their event, train them up on how to use it, and then increase their capability to protect the event while it's happening. With that, we can also apply for a vehicle to pull that trailer, which would allow us to update the EMA truck that we've had since the early two thousands without needing to leverage county funds, and that is something that is doable within the grant and still very much serves the purpose of the focus that they would like us to maintain for that. So this is a seventy-five, twenty-five percent grant, as with most of them, so there's a twenty-five percent county match. But with the equipment, there is training time that EMA will use with the event staff yearly throughout at least the four-year grant period. Additionally, we're working with the health department to get trained in stop the bleed, so that we can become stop the bleed trainers, and then take that training to any of the event staff that would want it, which would allow us to meet the twenty-five percent match through in-kind time, as opposed to trying to leverage county funds to meet the match.
Thank you.
Thank you, Abby.
Yeah, of course.
Do we have questions on the, on the grant, grant request?
I can, I can tell you, it was Saturday, went up to the Mini Five Hundred, had family participating in it, and I view things like that probably a little bit different with my fire background and then with this position, and it was not maintenance men on the rooftops.
Yeah.
We live in a society, but after the Boston Marathon, and then with the protest and whatnot going on, it's, it behooves us as leaders within the county to make sure that we're, we're ready for the unthinkable. So thank you for applying for this.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you for your comment. Any other comment? I entertain a motion.
Kenny Hale makes motion, we approve the twenty twenty-four State Homeland Security Grant for EMA in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yep, second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Thank you.
And thank you, Abby, for your pursuit of safety for emergencies and other things in our county.
Thank you, guys, for the continued support. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. Next item on our list is from the Better Community Coalition concerning opioid settlement task force.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Josh, Ms. Worth.
I think Keely and Tricia may join me, especially if they need to correct something, but, so I'm here for a couple reasons today. One, to kind of give you a goal of what we're wanting to do. Two, describe what that process might look like if you so are inclined. And then three, walk through the request. So, big picture, as you guys are well aware, we received opioid settlement funds that are really gonna be distributed over the next eighteen years. It's a very long-term process. If more settlements happen, it could go even longer. And so, you know, I know that we've talked about having a stable process with some continuity and longevity, so it's not just kind of a free-for-all from year to year. And so Better Communities Coalition is something that's been going on for just a few years. One of the major task force is the Mental Health Task Force, which Keely is in charge of. And that group said, hey, why don't we do what some other communities have done and bring this in under the house of another entity that is more geared for something like this? Because we wanted, not just, you know, you three as political commissioners, or myself, or, you know, any one small subset of people. We want a broad perspective of professionals, especially those who are in touch with communities that would be affected by these opioid dollars, to be able to vet RFPs and come back with good feedback to you all. And so that's what we've put before you today. You have a draft of a timeline for what the Better Coalition's, Better Communities Coalition could do. And the whole goal would be to work towards kickoff of the RFP process by January of twenty twenty-five, and really look at doing this for some longevity of funding on more than a singular year focus. Doesn't mean some groups won't want one-year funding, but try and put some processes in place where people can apply for multi-year funding for initiatives they may be doing. The other thing you have in your packet is a draft of what that RFP could look like. We know that will change, but Keely's done a great job putting a good start to that with Tricia's help. You also have exhibit E, which is from the state, which just lays out the final uses that we can use towards that money. And then lastly, you have a resolution. Hendricks County has done something very similar to this process, and they started it sooner. They put theirs under what they called the Hendricks County Opioid Settlement Task Force. That group does exactly what we're doing. It's, I think it's led out of the Willow Center, if I remember correctly. And they brought back all those vetted responses to the RFPs, to the commissioners and the council, which is why we included a copy of their resolution. So you can see, at the end, they approve everything by resolution jointly. And so if this is something you guys are interested in doing, then we would propose, Keely and Tricia and I, we've already put our heads together on, you know, starting to form out what the committee would look like. We wanna get our heads together, talk with some other people, and bring that back to you all for a final approval. And it would be that group that would be the work team to finalize the RFP, to make sure we're doing all the things we want and communicating this out to the public. Ladies, anything you would add to that? So really, what I'm looking for is, isn't okay, if this is something you guys wanna pursue, you know, approval in the minutes is fine for now. And then we would bring back a formalized list of representatives, less people, more types of positions. And then we would start that process and get a final approval for the RFP later in the year as the committee works through that.
Thank you. Do you have any questions from the, from the board here? So what we're looking at, as I see it, is approval to proceed with the direction that that is outlined in this draft.
Yeah.
Which is, I think, a strength of this, the Better Community Coalition is making something that's rather new to us, or it is to me. And I've been to several of the meetings, and I find it, find it very encouraging that we're working together as a, as a county for improvements in a variety of areas, but especially in the areas of health. And, and there's two or three other things that they include, but they're all for the betterment, and they're all involving collaboration, and I think that's, that's just an ideal situation. So the motion here that would be to proceed with the, the, the outline, the program.
Yeah, with the process.
The process.
Do you need a formal motion or a?
I would like it in the form of a motion, so it's reflected in the minutes, in case somebody looks back ten years from now and says, why did we do this?
Make the motion that we can pursue this, fulfilling the task outlined within the outline.
So it's been a motion made to proceed. Kenny? Thank you. And all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And thank you for the development of this, and Trish and everybody involved, I don't know who's all involved, but I am so pleased to be a part of it.
Keely's been a big driver of this, so thank you for that, Keely. And I will just mention, and Mayor, I like your blazer, it looks really sharp. The mayor and I have been in contact early on, and so we will certainly include them and any of the other municipalities that wanna be part of this process, so that they can feel, you know, part of that. And they still have their own pot of money to use, and they may say, hey, these are RFPs that we wanna put dollars to as well. But to your point about collaboration, we'll make sure to include our partners.
Thank you, sir.
The next item is your interlocal agreement, and that's really just an update.
It's pretty, but it's not.
Justin had come before you guys with an MOU from Hendricks County for, I think it was a stop sign or stoplight they were wanting to put in place, we, on County Line Road on their southern border. We have since found out that there is essentially an interlocal with us. We turned all that over to Mooresville, so it's not been forgotten. We turned all that over to Mooresville, so it's not been forgotten about. It's not our responsibility, so just giving you all an update that we don't have to finish that process.
No, I mean, it's more of an informational situation, just so that there's a record of it in their minutes and so forth, and nobody goes looking for this document to prove our interlocal responsibility.
So, I'm sorry, help me.
There's no need for a motion.
I didn't think so, but it's just information.
No, it's informational and also to make a record so that no one looks for the interlocal agreement later.
Nice. It was in our minutes.
It was something we approved, but the approval of that, we didn't have authority to do because it had already been turned over to Mooresville.
I got you. Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I had a question when I read that. I thought, hmm, got you. Okay, we now do have those three ordinances that are up for second reading. I'll just, I think it's best to proceed one by one. First ordinance is ordinance 2024-6, involves purchasing agents. Second reading, do we have any questions on the, on that particular ordinance?
The only question I have is what we talked about the last meeting. It's going to be Section 2B, all the way down to six. I'd like to strike the last verbiage out there, designating any of the above, designating any of the above people. The ones above, I don't have a problem with. I don't like seeing it delegated out from the office or elected official myself. Surveyor, or not surveyor, the engineer and superintendent, don't have a bit of a problem. But designating beyond that, I'm just not comfortable with.
So the change you want to do is?
Strike six.
Strike six.
Strike six. Hang on, let me find it.
Which I felt a little bit better, and I apologize for not being better prepared for the April 15th meeting. I was a little busy that day. I feel better that this is supplies, but I still think that either people that we appoint as department heads or office holders should have the responsibility versus passing the buck. That six is what tripped me up two weeks ago.
I'm sorry, Kenny, show me there, will you?
We're just wanting to strike six.
Designate, I got you. I was not seeing that one. Okay. Oh, the designate.
Kenny, how much motion?
Prove it with the striking there.
Next motion, we approve ordinance 2024-6, striking number six on the second page in Section 2B.
We have a second.
Well, I have a question. Legal counsel, since we are changing from the first reading, should we, if we're accepting this?
You're fine.
We don't have to waive a second reading since we made a change to what we adopted in the first reading?
No.
Okay. I will second.
All in favor, any more questions on that? Okay. Thank you. All in favor of that motion, the striking section, or not section, but spec, sorry. Striking?
Number six.
Number six. The designate of any of the above persons, all in favor of that motion, striking that, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that, I guess, is the way we approved the second reading, correct? Got it. Okay. The next ordinance is 2024-7, Establishing the Morgan County Drug Task Force. Do we have any questions on the second reading?
Kenny, how much motion, we approve that as well?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion of the second reading of the ordinance 2024-7, Establishing the Drug Task Force, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero. The third ordinance is 2024-8, which was an ordinance establishing a Public Art Advisory Board for the Morgan County Judicial Center. Do we have any questions or concerns on the second reading?
I was just kind of hoping that legal counsel would have thrown in there that she and I would have been in charge of the music section.
The music?
Yeah. Well, I'll yield the rest of my finger painting skills to more artisans than I'll ever be. I'll make a motion that we accept this.
All right. Thank you, sir. Do we have a motion that we accept the, for the second reading? Do we have a second? I'll second. All right, because I think it's a plus. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Thank you. All right, let's move on down the line here. We have some old business to attend to. First item is a equipment lease from the 911 dispatch.
Good morning. So this is, when I first talked about this with Scott, I thought, oh, this is crazy. But what I've learned in the process is the chairs that we use for our 24-hour centers are not your standard chairs. They're much more long-term and durable. And early on, I said, well, why would we want to engage in a lease in this process? You know, this is furniture. And again, I found out it's actually cheaper to do it this way than to buy it outright because we're not leasing chairs. We're essentially procuring refurbishment of chairs year in and year out. So this is a three-year term. A lot of the dispatch centers have started moving to this. So essentially, as our chairs break down, they'll come, replace the parts. If one gets to where it can't be refurbished, they have an obligation to replace the chair itself. And so this is a three-year term for us to essentially outsource maintenance of our chairs and make sure that we always have good capacity ones.
So what would you call it, a maintenance agreement of sorts?
Sure.
I mean, it's kind of what it looks like. They just, they replace what we need to have replaced.
Right.
And that seems to be a less expensive process.
It was a few thousand dollars cheaper than outright purchasing of them.
Okay. I lost somebody. Unless he's hiding behind an orange coat.
I said, Spike, you'll come back with a song.
He's working.
We have a equipment lease from the Hill, which is saving money by, instead of buying them outright, keeping track. It's like a maintenance agreement for our chairs. Is that?
Yeah, and I will be clear, it means from year to year, it isn't necessarily replacing new chairs. I mean, you may end up with a refurbished chair from another facility. But that's one reason, it's more cost-effective.
Do you have any questions?
No, this has been on the agenda for three months, so I've read it three times.
It's not Josh's fault, and it is not my fault. That's all I'm going to say.
All of, we have a second on the motion, or did we get a first?
I don't know.
We need a motion. Thank you. I'm glad you girls are down there taking care of it.
I'll make the motion that we accept the equipment lease agreement for 911 dispatch.
We have a second. I'll second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero. We take it off the agenda for next month on the old business. Thank you.
The next item is?
Next item is CenterPoint lease easement.
I don't know where this is going to land. They had wanted to turn a lease into a purchase. We put this on your guys' radar a while back. As part of the process, the assessor's office was able to come up with a valuation for the land for us. And it was substantially more than CenterPoint seemed willing to want to pay. And so right now, the ball's in their court to let us know if they want to proceed or not. And I don't know, did you hear from them in a week by chance?
I have not had a chance to get that all wrapped back up. So it has, I mean, we can't take action today, but informationally, yeah.
So right now, we'll keep that on hold, and we see if CenterPoint wants to continue to move forward or not.
I'm sorry, I got lost in.
Need to table that.
Yeah, you can table it until we hear back from CenterPoint.
Table the CenterPoint lease.
Motion been made to table.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We'll put that back on the list. Next order, is there any other old business that is not on the agenda here? Let's continue with the other business, which is a tort claim.
Are you all following that? Looks like the note Deb made is that, you know, normally she would put that in front of you to approve, to send on for insurance consideration. Insurance already denied the tort claim. It made a supplemental filing with some additional information concerning road conditions. She's providing that to you informationally to let you know that the additional information is being provided to insurance and may affect the denial of the claim, or not.
So this is, it says from Deb, a note that it's on the agenda and so that there's a record of the claim. Is that correct?
Yeah. It, she wants, she wants you to understand that this is, you have a partial record of this claim, but now you have a more complete record of this thing.
Complete. Okay. All right. Thank you. Does everybody understand the situation? I'll take them. Entertain a motion.
I'm not sure you need a motion. It's just informational.
Oh, we don't need a motion?
No.
It's just information that's just going farther.
Filling out the record related to the tort claim.
It's so recognized. We have any other business? We do have some people that would like to speak before we go to the good of the county. Mr., somebody, I saw it here, Mr. Galloway, did you have a comment?
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Alan Galloway. I'm with Triad Associates. We're professional engineers out of Indianapolis. Our offices are in Fort Ben. And I just came down just to give you some swag. And then we're interested in submitting a statement of qualification for the White River Trails RFQ. So I just wanted to, if we do submit that, I just wanted you to see a face with that if we do submit it. So that's all I wanted to convey this morning.
Well, thank you. Nice to have you with us.
Thank you.
I have another, James Olson. I don't, do you have a comment, or you just signed that you were here? Okay. Yes, we need to, we're glad you're here.
He's just happy we accepted the roads.
Yes, that's true.
Thank you for being here.
All right. Any further business in front of the board?
I have a comment.
All right, that's for the good of the county, I hope.
I think it is, but I will be viewed as biased and political. But my weekend was consumed with lies and falsehoods of what this board is going to do to a non-for-profit organization, of which not only did the internet burn up and get it totally wrong, but so did my phone, including several people that, you know, one of them raised me. And she was just horrified that I would be shutting down a festival that's gone on for years and years and years, a festival that I used to be a board member. And so, as I read, I stopped at the 258th comment on how dumb I was and how could I do that? And we're destroying tradition, and we're getting rid of parking. And they didn't understand there still need to be parking on the square because the parking garage back here won't hold all the cars. And I'm thinking, some of these people need to buy a paper and move to town. So I will not put words into anybody's mouth but my own. I've done this for many, many years. And while I'm a little bit goofier than most that do these type of positions, I do like to have fun. But I promise to the citizens of Morgan County, I'm not doing anything to break tradition. I, I'm a firm believer in tradition. I was a history minor, one class away from a major in undergrad school, but I didn't like one of the teachers at a small institution. So my senior year, second semester, I elected not to take that class. With that said, probably ought to go to the source. If you're going to accuse the city, or the county, or any government entity of trying to destroy something that's been in a community for 50-plus years versus trying to read it off of a Facebook post that had it totally butchered. And so, with that said, you know, for the good of the county, it's good that we love our traditions. It's good that we get upset and feel we have a voice, because you do. The community does have a voice. There's not an elected official that I know that doesn't listen to their constituents. But so many times, they have no clue that our hands are tied. And yes, not necessarily this next year for '24, but we did give a heads up in '25, '26, and '27. There's going to be major renovations to the current courthouse on the square. But as far as green space, that's not been voted on or set in stone, or asphalt, or parking. And it is my intentions, as long as I sit up here, not to eliminate any parking. I would think the redesign would have to have the same amount, if not more, parking. So for some of the things that were said, I just want to look at certain people, and I will be addressing them because the neat thing is, is I know them personally. And I'm going to go, really? Because they know, if I know you personally, then there's a high probability you know me personally. Do you really think I would do that? And so I just caution, because it didn't end there, that was Friday. And then Sunday, my phone started burning up on another organization that was going to get kicked off the square. So I just want everybody to know that there is complete transparency on hosting events. We did accept their petition to use the courthouse. We only gave a head up that there's construction coming. And all those timelines are not set in stone at this point because we have a major judicial center, not parking garage. There is no parking garage. Keith, no parking garage. I don't know how many times we have to say it. So. There was a huge blow up that burned up and took a lot of my weekend away from me and my family on misinformation on, that we were taking.
Disgusted, taking away one of the festivals.
Correct. Mm-hmm. And that was never discussed up here. So miscommunication can be just as deadly as lack of communication. So thank you. But I support the organization, always have and always will.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
I thought I'd lost the, you know, having the honor of being the parade marshal last time, I thought maybe they would remove me again. That was a lot of, a lot of consternation that was brought about without thoughts, I think. Any other remarks or comments? I, first I have two, very, very brief. Of course, tomorrow is Election Day primary, and it behooves us all to get out, if we haven't been there already, to make our, the blessings of liberty of being able to govern yourselves. And that's what we do. And so, enjoy your voting. And the other thing I'd like to comment on briefly is something along what you're talking about there, Commissioner Kaya, is the, this morning, Mr. Oaks from the county, from Martinsville, was here. Right now, we have the mayor with us of Martinsville. One of the nice blessings of governing in this county is the collaboration between communities. And we have not only communities' leadership, but we have communities supporting that with us, with, with things like the Kendrick Foundation. And it's just wonderful to be a part of a group of people that are interested, working together for the betterment of us all. And thank you, Mayor, for being here. And thank you, Mayor, for being here, and Gary, and all of you, and I wish you a nice continuance of May. We have our next meeting on the 20th, and I look forward to, that's an evening meeting. And I hope you all can attend, and happy voting. I don't know where Kenny went.
I moved to adjourn.
Oh, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Everybody have a good day.